Okay, is everybody on? Ready? Good evening, middle school scholars. Welcome to our reopening conversation. I thought it would be really important to start a dialogue with students in middle school and high school so that you get a sense of what school is going to look like in this new academic school year. There's a lot of things that have changed and are different, and I think it's important that the same way we have had an opportunity to speak with your parents and the community about some of the safety precautions that we as a district have taken into account to make sure that you have a safe return, that you're also part of that conversation. For those of you who don't know me, I am your new superintendent, Dr. Alexandra Estrella. I usually go by Alex. So I'm really looking forward to having you back in schools and getting to know all of you and the work that you have done thus far and helping us also understand how this new experience is working out and also learning from you what things we could eventually do to make things even better. I'm going to be sharing a PowerPoint today with some information to just kind of guide our conversation. And I also have members in the panel that are going to work with us and help us as we engage in this dialogue with you today. In some cases, I'm going to have you raise your hands to see if you agree or disagree with some ideas or to kind of test out your skills around how to prepare in a safe manner for returning to school. So I'm going to start off by sharing a PowerPoint. So just give me one quick second. Can everybody see the PowerPoint? Great. So I want to start off by talking a little bit to you about what the life in a day of a middle school student will look like if you come in person. I'm also going to show you what a life in a day for you will look like if you are continuing with distance learning. So I'm going to pretend that we have Malik, our seventh grade student, in a general ed class. Malik will start off his day getting on the bus. And when Malik is on the bus, there are particular rules that Malik needs to follow to ensure his safety and the safety of other students. I'm going to ask Ms. Sandra Feos to speak to you a little bit about the rules that we will have to follow when we get on the bus.
Hi, everybody. I think I know some of you guys, and you guys might have known me as Mrs. Fe. I used to be a principal at Brookside Elementary School. So I hope some of my old students are on this call. And I will take you right now just through some things that you will notice that are a little bit different about the way that we travel to school on a school bus. When you get on the school bus, you're actually going to have an assigned seat. And if you are sitting towards the back of the bus, you will be boarding first so that as you are passing to go to your seat, you're not passing a whole lot of people to get to your seat. The bus will be filled from the back to the front.
If you could take your mask off so they can hear you.
I apologize. I'll start that again. Okay, so as you are traveling to school, one of the things that you'll notice that's going to be different about the way that we enter the bus is that you will enter through the front door, but your seat is going to be assigned somewhere on the bus, and we're going to actually assign the seats from the back to the front. So as you're walking past to get to your seat, you're not going to have that many people that you're going to walk past. That's one of the ways that we're maintaining some safety. You're also going to be wearing your mask the entire time that you're on the bus, and all of your friends are going to be wearing their mask too. And the bus will not be as full as it normally is during the regular school year. So those are one of the things that you're going to be encountering as you get on the bus. Another thing is that you have to remember that each day you're going to be bringing a screener from home, or you're going to be doing a screener on a phone, and we could talk a little bit about that in a little bit, but you'll need that before you get on the bus.
Thank you. That's really helpful, Sandra. So then, once you are on the bus and on your way to school, you will arrive at school at approximately 8:00 in the morning. When you arrive, then you're going to go into your homework classes where you're going to be within your cohort. When you arrive to your homeroom, you're going to be in your homeroom for approximately 10 minutes. You're going to remain in your cohort while you then transition into your morning classes. You're going to have two blocks. You're going to have block one and block two during the morning. And we're going to have a mask break in between the different blocks because I know how hard it is to wear a mask all day and not have an opportunity to have a mask break. So we want to make sure that you have a mask break. But we have to make sure, like Ms. Feo said, you need to keep your mask on at all times unless we're in the middle of a break. Then at around 10:30 to 12:10, you're going to also then go into block three. And one of the things that you will notice that is different this year is that teachers are going to be coming to you rather than you going to different classes. And this will happen for most of your day. Then at around 12:10, 12:30, you're going to have lunch. And unlike previous years, you're going to have lunch in your classroom rather than in the cafeteria. And the reason we're doing this is because we want to limit the number of students you come in contact to and keep you to one cohort of students and not have you engage with other students because we want to make sure that we keep you safe. And throughout this whole process, we're going to also have you in the classroom six feet apart from one another to make sure that you are safe. At 12:30 to 2:30, then you're going to go into block two and five. But one of the things I want to mention is that when you have lunch, you will also obviously have a mask break there because you will be eating and you won't be utilizing your mask. Then, once your day ends at 2:30, you will either take the bus home or you will transition into your after-school activities. I want to show you an example also of what the school day will look like. Ralph, is Mr. Reynolds available?
I'm not yet. I don't see Mr. Reynolds in the room.
Okay. Thank you. So before we go into the schedule, I also want to show you if you decided, if your parents decided that you're going to be engaging in distance learning, or those days in which you are in the hybrid mode and you are home, that I want you to know what the day would look like. So the days that you are home, let's pretend you are Malik again. Malik will have breakfast, and then Malik will transition at 8:00 to log into his remote learning experience. At 8:10, from 8:00 to 8:10, he will join his cohort in homeroom, and then transition at 8:20 to have his classes, block one and block two, and then have in between that a small break while your classmates are engaging in a mask break, and then you will transition to block three at around 10:30. At around 12:10, you will break for lunch, and you will return back at around 12:30 to start your next block of classes. And then at 2:30, you will either have an activity at home or your school day would conclude. Now, this is an example of the schedule, and we're going to have Mr. Reynolds speak a little bit about what the schedule is going to look like.
Hi, guys. Hope everyone is doing well. Thanks for your patience. Ultimately, each middle school has divided its population in half based on the families that have selected hybrid learning. So all families were given the opportunity to either have their student come face-to-face for two days or remote learning, primarily remote learning. So anyone who chose the hybrid model, if you are in group A and each school divided the alphabet just a little bit based on its population, but so West Rocks goes A through L, and I think Ponus and Roten is very similar to that, just like Nathan Hale, but the beginning part of the alphabet, and that school will communicate exactly where you fall. But West Rocks, for example, is A through L. If your last name is A through L and you've selected hybrid, you are going to come in person to school on A days, the letter A. So if you look at the calendar that's shared right now, on September 8th, it is at first the A day, so anybody with the last name in the beginning part of the alphabet, you will come in person on A days. And that B, if you're in the second half of the alphabet and you selected hybrid, you will be remote learning, but following your same bell schedule that I think Dr. Estrada was mentioning before. And then if you have selected remote learning in general all the time, no matter if it's A or B, you will be remote learning. So on the eighth, you would be remote learning. The same thing on the ninth, notice it's an A. So if you're in the beginning part of the alphabet, you'll again go in person. And if you are in the B group that selected hybrid or you're remote only, you'll be learning remotely and following your same schedule. On the 10th, you'll switch. So if you're in the second half of the alphabet and selected hybrid, you're going to come to school for in-person learning. And then if you are the beginning part of the alphabet, if you're in A group, you will be remote learning. And then all those families that selected remote again would remain remote, but just following that same bell schedule. And so that'll rotate AA, BB, AA, BB, all the way through the remainder of the month and as we go on throughout the school year. And I know this was late, but we worked really hard to align it with the high schools' schedule. So all secondary schools, 7 through 12, are following the same letter days, and that was really important to families for consistency. So we are appreciative of that.
Thank you. And this is just an example of October and what it would look like, like Mr. Reynolds described, and November as well as December. So I'm going to turn it now over to Ms. Feos and Dr. Costanza to speak about some of the safety precautions that we are taking to ensure your safety and well-being.
Dr. Costanzo? Yeah, I could start by explaining the screener, which is the picture that's there. Did you want me to start?
Sure.
Okay. So one of the ways that we are maintaining a safe environment is that everybody before either going to work or coming to school fills out a little screener. What this is, is a set of questions that your parents will help you fill out or that you will fill out in front of your parent that basically tells us how you're feeling for that day. That's the picture that you see here. It's going to be an app. We are in the middle of purchasing that app right now. So the first few days, you're actually going to see a paper screener. I think it was probably sent to your house already, and you'll get a couple more, but then eventually it'll be on your phone. If you don't have a phone, it's okay because we'll still have the paper ones available for students that don't have a phone or can't bring their phone to school. But for those of you guys that do have a phone, you'll be able to do it on your phone. Another way that we're keeping students safe is by what we're calling staggering arrivals. That means that we have a little bit of differences in times as to when kids are getting to school. So sixth grade may arrive five minutes early, or eighth grade may arrive five minutes early, and that way it prevents everybody from arriving at the exact same time. And you will notice at each of your middle schools that you might be entering on a different entrance. So your school principals have communicated that also with you guys. Is that right, Mr. Reynolds? That we communicated that to parents?
You're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, I was just reading the chat. I was trying to answer some questions. Can you just ask that again?
Yeah, I said, is that right, that most people at this point have communicated that you have multiple entries into the school? Okay, good. And don't worry, on the first day, if you arrive and you don't know what entrance you're supposed to go to, there's going to be plenty of signs outside that tell you if you're in this house, you'll enter this way, and if you're in the other house, you'll enter this way. We'll have a lot of help outside. And then your bus and parent drop-offs will be in different locations, which is not something brand new, but we're going to make sure that we are not having a lot of people crowding. Dr. Costanzo, do you want me?
You just define what a screener, a health screener is. Some of the students have a question around that.
I can actually give you guys an example of one of the questions. So one of the questions, that's a big question right now, is have you traveled?
Can you describe what, just first, like what the screener is, and then go into the question if you don't mind?
No, I don't mind. So a screener is some questions that people get asked prior to going to work or coming to school that lets us check in with ourselves to make sure that we are not feeling sick before we leave the house to go to work or to go to school. So staff members, like your teachers, will also do a screening. I have to do a screening every morning, and then you'll have to do one every morning too. And what it is, it's a series of questions that you're going to ask yourself, one of them being like, have you experienced the cough? Have you had a fever that's over 100.4? It'll be some questions like that. And if you answer no to those questions, it indicates to us and to yourself that you're healthy to go to school. Another question on the screener is, have you traveled somewhere that is what we're calling hotspots? So New York, Connecticut, New Jersey, Massachusetts, all those states that are basically above the tri-state area and above have been safe spaces for us to travel into. Any spaces below have been deemed what we call a hotspot. That means that COVID in those areas is particularly high right now, and the governor has asked us not to travel into those areas. So part of your screener will include a question if you've traveled to those areas or if you've had visitors to your house that have come from those areas. And so a screener really is kind of like a survey, and you will do one every morning. And then that lets us know that you're okay to come to school. Does that answer the question?
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Costanzo, do you want to talk about student transitions and dismissals?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Hi, everybody. It's good to be thinking that you're going to be returning to school in just a few more days. So if you're familiar with middle school, you already know what student transitions look like in your school. So this will be different. But if you're an incoming sixth grader and you finished up fifth grade last year, you really don't have a comparative perspective. This is going to be what it is for your first middle school experience. So I think the big thing to think about if you're entering seventh or eighth grade is that when you go from one class to another, say, when you go from math to your English class, the number of kids in the hallway will be, you'll notice there'll be many less kids in the hallway. You'll notice signage on the ground. There'll be arrows and language directing you to go in one direction, and there'll be just far fewer kids. If you think about it, your middle school has somewhere between 500 and 700 students in it. And just by virtue of that A-B schedule that you heard Mr. Reynolds, the West Rocks principal, talk about before, just by virtue of that schedule, only half of the students are going to be in the building at any one time. So just that alone reduces the number of students in the hallway by 50%. Then on top of that, the student transitions are really, really going to be planned out so that certain classes pick up and go, walk down the hallway to their class, and then another group will be asked to do the same. So when the bell rings, everybody will get up at one time and move to the next class. It'll actually be a lot more orderly than that. And you'll notice far fewer kids walking the halls in between classes. We've also changed classrooms inside. There's a lot less furniture. You're going to notice, wow, there's a lot of space in this classroom. In the past, it's been more cramped, and most of our classrooms have been full. But if you're a seventh or an eighth grader, you're going to notice, wow, there's a whole lot more space in this classroom than I remember when I was in sixth grade or seventh grade. Now, if you're a fifth grader rising to sixth grade, this is what it's going to be. You're just going to notice that it's a large building and there aren't a whole lot of students inside of it. And you would have seen a very similar thing if you were still in fifth grade at the elementary level. All buildings are running with either less students or less students in the classrooms. And then dismissal is going to be similar to what Ms. Feos talked about earlier. It's going to be staggered. So it won't be the old-fashioned bell rings, everybody gets up, and they walk out, and they either get on a bus or they walk home, or they find their mom or dad, and they get in a car and drive off. It's going to happen over a period of 10 to 15 minutes. Instead of that one bell, everybody gets up and goes. Your principal and your teacher and all of the other adults in the building are going to be really helping to answer your questions. So if you're confused or you're concerned, you will see a lot of adults outside and in the hallways, and they'll be looking for you just like you're looking for them. They're going to be looking for you. So really, don't think twice about asking another question or asking multiple questions. Everybody has a lot of questions, and bus pickup and parent pickup will be very easy. And after a couple of days, you'll get the routine, and you'll understand why we're doing it differently. It's just to keep everybody safe.
Thank you, Dr. Costanzo. Now, I'm going to unshare my screen for a moment, and I'm going to ask the team to please put on their face masks. And I'm going to call on different members. And what I want you guys to do is to raise your hands when you agree with the statement that I am making. So let's look at Ms. Yvette Gervage. Hopefully, you all can see her. Raise your hand or provide a thumbs up if you believe that her mask is appropriate for us, for any of you to wear to school. And Ralph, you're going to have to help me out here. Do we get any thumbs up for this one?
We've got 38, 39. Yeah, the numbers are going up.
The numbers are going up for thumbs up for the, okay.
We actually, yep, we're at 72, 78, 85 out of about 300. So yeah, a lot of people raising their hands, so.
Very good. Okay, can you clear the screen for me, Ralph?
Sure, I can. Thanks, guys.
Those of you who gave a thumbs up or raised your hand, you are correct. Ms. Yvette Gervage is wearing an appropriate mask. And what you will find, some teachers wearing this mask because they want you to see their face and when they're smiling and speaking to you. And also for younger children, it really helps for them to see the physical expression of the teacher. So thumbs up, Ms. Gervage. Now, we have our amazing Ralph Balenzese. He's wearing a mask from the Chicago Cubs. I want you to give me a thumbs up or raise your hands if you think Ralph is wearing an appropriate mask that you can wear to school. How are we doing, Ralph?
We're doing really well. I think we've got a lot of good Cubs fans here too, which is great. I'm going to have more fans than Dr. Gervage in just a moment, which I do. But over 100.
Very good. So now let's look at Dr. Costanzo. Is Dr. Costanzo wearing an appropriate mask? Thumbs up or raise your hands if you believe he's wearing an appropriate mask. Dr. Costanzo, people need to see your mask. It looks a little dark over there. Okay, that's much better. Is Dr. Costanzo wearing an appropriate mask that you could wear to school? Thumbs up, hands up if you think that he should. He has the right mask. Anyone, Ralph, raising their hands on this one?
It's about half the amount of the others. We've got about 50, but nowhere near as much as the first two.
Okay, so actually, you cannot wear that mask to school. Why? Because
And it's dropping.
Dr. Costanzo's mask will keep him safe but won't keep other people safe. And I'm going to ask our expert, Ms. Joanne Malonowski, to give us a little bit more information of why that mask should not be worn.
Good afternoon. Dr. Costanzo's mask has what's called a respirator on it, and it is a one-way valve which releases all of his aerosol, all of his germs, out. So we don't want to breathe Dr. Costanzo's germs. So that's the reason why we don't allow the little respirator valve on the mask. That's definitely a no-no for everybody.
So, Dr. Costanzo, please change your mask. Thank you. So with that said, I'm going to have Ms. Gervage speak a little bit about some of the, in some cases, some kids that might need to have accommodations and might not be able to wear a mask. So can you speak to that, please? We can't hear.
There are different kinds of masks. And I strongly suggest that you, if you can, try on a few and see which is most comfortable for you. Obviously, if you're a Cubs fan, we'll understand, but there are many, many different kinds of masks. And just like a pair of shoes, you should try it on a few if you can and see what is most comfortable. But there may be some students in your class that have severe medical problems, and they can't sustain wearing a mask. We're going to work with them to slowly teach them how to wear a mask and how to tolerate a mask. But there are additional kinds of safety precautions for others, and that may include a shield. So while this may not be as totally safe as the mask, for those few people in our school district who cannot wear a mask because of medical concerns, you may see them or your teachers working with them wearing a shield. It's very important that we put something inside the shield so it doesn't fog up, like mine is fogging up right now. But you may see all different types of safe masks, including the clear mask so that you can see your teacher smile and speak, or a face shield. So be prepared. It's going to be interesting the first week of school to see what your friends are sporting in the class with regard to face coverings. You're muted.
I'm going to turn it over now to Joanne Malonowski that's going to talk to you about how to keep your mask clean when you take mask breaks and how to put your mask on as well as off. The floor is yours.
Okay, boys and girls, what I'm going to tell you is that you would hold your mask from the ear loops. I hope you can see all that. The glare behind me is terrible, but I can't do anything about that. So when you pick your mask up, you put it over your nose, over your face, and bring the loops over your ears, just like that, okay? So we're not touching the outside of the mask. The reason for not touching that is this part will be contaminated as you continue to is this part will be contaminated as you continue to use that because of the outside air, because of other germs. We don't want you touching the outside, okay? So when it comes time for you to take your mask off, again, we're going to be providing you with a paper bag because you're probably saying to yourself, well, what am I going to do with my mask when I'm eating? You, obviously, you can't even wear your mask. We haven't figured that one out yet. So you have to remove it. And the way to remove that, hand hygiene. We haven't talked a lot about hand hygiene here, but hygiene is going to be the most important thing, is keeping your hands clean. And also six-foot distancing. Those two items are huge in order to keep us safe along with the mask, okay? So we're going to take the loops like this after I've washed my hands and we're going to remove it like this, okay? Now, there's two ways you can do it. You can either fold it lengthwise, like I just did, keeping the outside. I'm going to contaminate this, even though I don't want to, but the outside is the dirty part. So you're going to fold it in half lengthwise, if that's the way you want to do it, and put it inside of the paper bag, okay? Or the way I like to do it, either way is correct, is fold it widthwise, this way, so that all of those germs on the outside are inside, okay? These are your germs on the inner aspect of that mask. And then you would put it in the bag. Sit down, you put it in just like this. Have it next to you on your desk. Because if you put it on the floor, you've now contaminated the mask even more on both sides. If you put it on top of your desk, there's all germs on top of there, okay? I know what some people are doing. You could put it on a clean paper towel. That would also be appropriate. You could turn it upside down and put it on a clean paper towel. But we've decided that it's a little bit more safer to use the paper bag. This way, everybody has their own mask and it won't be confused. So when you want to put it back on after you've eaten, you want to make sure your hands are clean. Go back onto your bag. You hold it this way, as you can see, the outer aspect. You're holding it by the loops and you're going to put it over. And just pull it down. Make sure it covers your nose. I'm going to do the cardinal sin here. You don't do this. You don't wear your mask like this. And we've all been in grocery stores and we see people. That's aerosol coming from my nose. That's one thing you don't want to do. You don't want to do this either, okay? Because what's the point of wearing the mask? The way you get sick is touching your face. The mask helps you, reminds you not to touch your eyes, your nose, and your mouth. If you're like this, walking around with it and you're rubbing your eyes and rubbing your nose, everything is contaminated. Everything that you touch is also contaminated. That's why the hand hygiene is so important. So we're asking you not to wear your mask like this. You need to have your nose and your mouth covered. And you will have mask breaks and you'll have your bag. Paper bag is much better and is recommended by the FDA. Nurses use those for those special masks that we wear, N95s, because plastic bags can cause condensation. And so they actually keep the germs inside of a plastic bag. So that's pretty much what you need to remember with your mask. And just remember to keep washing your hands. I can't say that enough. And keep your social distancing because it really does work.
Thank you. So now, one of the big things that was going to be very different for us is the number of times we're going to have to wash our hands this year. And we have a video to show you how you can start planning and thinking about what 20 seconds looks like. Because one of the things that's going to be really important is not only that you wash your hands, but how much time you take washing your hands. And in order for you to kill all the germs from your hands, you really need to wash your hands for 20 whole seconds. So we have a video that one of our principals made for us, singing "Happy Birthday", so that you can see that by singing "Happy Birthday", approximately three times, you can wash your hands and count more or less 20 seconds. So please take a look at this video of one of our mystery principals washing his hands for 20 seconds. And that is 20 seconds of your time that you will need to ensure that you wash your hands thoroughly and disinfect it. And that's going to be really important, boys and girls, as we transition into the new academic school year. Because if our hands are clean, our ability to spread germs are less likely. So I think that kind of sums up in terms of that element. I'm going to share my screen again to speak about hallway transitions because I think that that's also another piece that's going to be really important as we come into the academic year. But one other thing that you're going to notice before I go into that is the utilization of plexiglass. Ms. Gervage, you want to talk for two seconds about the use of plexiglass in some of the classrooms? I think you're muted.
Sure. So we have plexiglass of different shapes and sizes throughout the buildings. This is a piece of large plexiglass that's on a table that may be shared by another person. And as you can see, my workstation is there. My computer is there. I'm wearing my mask with the clear shield. So if you look closely, you'll see me smiling while I'm working. And then there is a big plexiglass shield. So if someone is sitting on the other side of the table, we are protected and we are not passing our germs and our contamination across that field. There are other forms of plexiglass that I think the superintendent is going to show you next.
We don't have the other one.
Okay, I did send it. There are cubes that you may see some students using right on their desk. They're not quite as large as the one on my conference table, but smaller so that a student can be working at their desk. And some of them have some holes in them so that if a teacher or perhaps an occupational therapist or someone working with you needs to hand you materials, they can do that safely through the opening in the cube. And we'll be sure to get those pictures to you so that you can see them. But look for plexiglass. It's another form of safety in addition to the masks, in addition to the hand hygiene, in addition to the physical distancing, perhaps some plexiglass or plastic shields. You'll be noticing all of these things when you come back to school next week.
Thank you. And just to close out, I just want to go over hallway transitions. So I'm going to turn it over now to Sandra and Dr. Costanzo.
So Dr. Costanzo mentioned it just a little bit ago that when you guys are in the hall, you'll notice that your hallways are less crowded. And I think that that is the biggest thing that you'll notice because you'll have different times, different passing times. There will be just fewer kids in the hallways. The hallways will be more orderly. You'll follow certain arrows so that you're traveling in one direction. It'll be a lot like our supermarkets, except this time we'll actually follow the arrows. Anything else, Dr. Costanzo?
No, I think that explains it.
There's one big thing that the students are asking, and that is if they're going to be going to class to class or are teachers going to them?
So they, go ahead.
There'll be a combination. I know that the principals have made an effort to have teachers go to students. And that will happen for a good part of the day. But that is not 100% of the case. So we don't have a percentage breakdown per school, but it's likely that the majority, more than half of the times that you need to transition, you'll be able to stay right where you are and a teacher will come to you. But there will be some occasions where you'll need to get up with your cohort of students that's in that classroom and go to a new learning environment.
Thank you. And now I'm going to now transition to Q and A. So Brenda, I know a lot of questions about school supplies. And I know we have Mr. Reynolds here. Do you want to speak at least in terms of West Rock and what the plan is around school supply lists?
Sure, I was trying to respond to some of them, some of the questions in the chat. So hopefully, you can kind of see the answers. It's really based on the school. I know we have very similar school supply lists. But I know some of us have posted those on the school websites. If you don't see them, I think you can reach out. I know people have been, schools have been fielding questions. So if you call the school, the main office staff will be able to direct you on whether it was a paper letter, a hard copy letter that was mailed previously, whether it was posted on the website, something along those lines. I know each school has a slightly different requirement around school supplies. And I know that some schools, including West Rocks, is going to have a day where families can come pick up some of the essential materials and resources from the outside of the school, such as like some notebooks, some interactive notebooks for some of the content areas and other things. And we're going to send a blast out to families and I'm sure other schools are doing that, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dr. Australia, there's a couple of questions about gator masks. So if Dr. Costanzo and Ms. Foyers could address that, that would be helpful.
Sure, I, you know, it's funny that you would bring that up because I purchased a couple of those for my middle son who's going into first grade, but I'm going to end up not having him wear those. So technically, there isn't any health guidance that outright bans gator masks from being worn. And the reason for that is they're better than having nothing on your face. But there really are better options for parents and students. And those really are the masks that you see on this presentation minus the one that I had on with the valves. So the only thing that the district is banning are masks that have the valves as part of the mask because it actually is a risk for those around the person wearing the mask. We think that there are much better options than the gator mask. We're not going to ban gator masks from schools, but we really prefer that students wear a more traditional mask like we've talked about today. Brenda, the pink mask that you have on is a very good option. They come in different colors. We saw Ralph earlier wearing, looked like more of a, like a mesh, not a surgical mask, but a mask in which there's a loop for both ears. There's very little room on either side of the face for air to escape. Now, if that were a Boston Red Sox mask, that'd be a much better mask. But we'll accept the Chicago Cubs mask as well.
Thank you. There's a question about Ms. Gervage. Can you, some parents, I'm assuming as a parent, want the link to where you purchased your face mask? I'm assuming is the one with the clear opening. Can you provide some information around that?
Well, we will, we will post that on the website, but they're very available on the internet. So if you just Google or look for clear face masks, you'll see them.
Thank you. One of the other things I was asked is if there would be an information session just for kids that are virtual only. And I'm going to ask the principals to have a follow-up conversation, especially for that sixth grade cohort coming in for the first time. So we will, I will work with the principals to have a conversation with the families that are virtual only to address any concerns that they might have. So Adam, I don't know if you can be the messenger for the team in terms of middle school around that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Dr. Australia, we're also getting a few different questions about lockers and backpacks. If somebody could address that?
Yeah, so lockers are not going to be in use this year. The recommendation from the CDC is that lockers end up inevitably having students too close together. If you can imagine being in the school last year, if you had a locker last year and how close those lockers can be, it really becomes a challenge to making sure that we're far enough apart. Sandra, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Well, I think you'll be, you'll be able to have your books in the classroom with you. Usually, you could put it right under your seats. Most desks are equipped to be able to keep some books there. Because it's really your classroom that you're going into, you'll be allowed to keep some things in your classroom. And you'll have your backpack with you for the things that you will carry back and forth to and from school. But we will also talk to your principals and we have, and your teachers about allowing you to store some heavier items, heavier textbooks at your desks.
And just, a lot of students had questions about Group A, Group B, and what group they will be in. I urge you to follow up with your schools if you haven't received the information yet. I know notifications went out with that information in terms of what cohort you're in. But your schools would be the best people to answer those questions for you, people at your school, sorry. So I have to conclude at this point because we are meeting with the high school students next. I just want to thank all of the middle school students that were here in this conversation today. And I'm looking forward to an amazing start of the school year. I can't wait to meet many of you as I visit the schools throughout the upcoming few weeks. And I'm really excited to have you. I feel the school has no joy without all of you. So I'm looking forward to seeing everyone soon on September 8. I'll be in many schools bright and early, just as excited as I'm hoping you are to come back to school. Have a great rest of your week and please stay healthy. And I look forward to seeing everyone. Take care.